Okay.
He should be.
He's not coming.
Okay.
Again?
Again.
All righty. I'll call to order the study session, a mayor and city council meeting at 4:00 PM, Wednesday, October 10, 2018, here at City Health Conflict Council Chambers. Please please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Varona, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeda?
He has a...
Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start with the presentation, uh, I guess by Michael Vasquez of two potential Magalhães municipal authorities, uh, number two, thirty...
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, would you do mind if we deviate from the agenda, go to three and then back to one?
Oh, I see. Okay. Sounds good to me.
That'd be okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's kinda wrong. So we'll go ahead and deviate from number one to number two, and we'll go with update of Tachea Park improvements.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Hope you guys are having a nice day today. Dr. Felix asked me to give you guys a brief update about Tachea Park and, uh, and the murals. We'll start with Tachea Park. Um, so, the city, since, uh, the presentation of mayor and council, uh, we hired a recent graduate from the University of Arizona, as you guys are aware, to do a conceptual design for Tachea Park. We presented that design for you a few months back. Seemed like it had pretty good reception. The direction from mayor and council there was to do a phasing plan for the, for the park, the conceptual park design. Currently, we're working with a group called Wheat Design Group out of Tucson, very highly regarded landscape architect, uh, is the prime, as well as Presidio Engineering. And what they're working to prepare for us currently is the phasing plan for the Tachea Park concept, along with construction documents that correlate with each of those phases. What's good about that is that, um, depending on funding, availability, or budget, budgetary capacity, we can go ahead and, um, if we have enough funds to, uh, to execute the entire park design, we'll be able to move forward with it. Um, if, you know, we're limited for some reason during a fiscal year, we can choose to break the park into the phases that they're providing us. But it's nice because once we have all that information, it'll be a shovel-ready project. The consultants will include a cost estimate for the design, the phasing, and construction for, uh, excuse me, and construction drawings for the entire project to ensure that it's shovel-ready, as I just mentioned. And, uh, the construction documents will be comprehensive but correlate with each phase. Uh, so depending on, yeah, and so, what else? Let's see, consultants will also have to coordinate with, uh, John Hayes. They're aware that they have to coordinate with the county, um, to make sure that all the floodplain issues and, and drain, there were some questions about drainage and how those issues were gonna be handled, so we've referred them to the county as well, and so they'll be, um, coordinating with them to ensure that every decision that they make related to the design will ultimately, um, any, any potential issue will be mitigated as they're designing their project, instead of finding out later that, oh, there's issues with the floodplain and here's a setback. So it's gonna be a nice and holistic project moving forward. Once, uh, and they anticipate that they'll be ready with their proposal for the phasing and the construction documents by the end of October. As soon as I receive that, we can get it on the agenda for your review. That's pretty much all I have for, uh, the Tachea Park, uh, update. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, Mr. Dillon, when you bring the plans to us in October, is this, is there an allocation of financial resources to implement this, or do we still have to talk about that? Or do we talk about that during our budget development stages?
Uh, Mayor, Councilor, now, we have a hundred and fifty thousand allocated for the, uh, this park. And we have another fifty thousand that came from Donora. Uh, the reason we're asking for a full construction plan is because we then wanna go out to, I've met those two major donors in Tucson that have strong ties to the lotus, and wanna present for them, uh, with the opportunity to make some gifts. And one of the two also to be prepared to solicit from state and federal funds for , uh, let me have these children. So, uh, that's why we went from design to design construction, to have a shovel-ready project.
Okay. So then, you just want the approval in October of the schematics?
Both, the schematic and the construction.
Okay.
So we're asking for a proposal for the, uh, the schematic, um, the phasing proposal for the, the approved concept, and then, construction documents, uh, estimate that will correlate with each of those phases. So, uh, you know, the idea is to then move forward with the generation of both the phasing and the construction documents at the same time, if funding supports it and mayor and council support it. That way, once the phasing and construction documents are generated, we can, as Dr. Felix said, we can seek funding sources, and, and it'd be nice to build it all at once and not even need to worry about the phasing. But the nice thing is, is, uh, having the comprehensive design shows sort of the vision for the entire park, and shows that, you know, we'll have a plan moving forward for it, you know, in the next few years. And our, our funding sources will understand sort of, uh, the, or folks that will propose, um, to fund the project will understand kind of the whole vision, uh, as opposed to just a piece or a section. So that's, that's the rationale.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Varona. Any other questions?
Yeah, we can expect the estimate for both of those items at the end of October.
Anything else from the council? Uh, were, were you gonna give us an update then on the mural?
On the mural? Yes. Um, so, yesterday I sent out a memo towards the end of the day. I'm not sure how many of you folks had a chance to take a look at that. Uh, the, uh, regarding the mural, as I mentioned, uh, in the, in the murals, as I mentioned in the memorandum, uh, the city manager's office has been working with, on several initiatives with several different groups to promote murals and public arts, um, throughout the city. Uh, we've been working with, uh, the Border Youth Tennis Exchange Program to, to get involved with, uh, they have an event that they're trying to do in December, um, that, that promotes, um, youth on both sides of the, uh, both sides of the border, ultimately from, uh, painting murals on tennis, uh, backboards, which'll be pretty cool, 'cause they'll have, they're working with the Boys and Girls Club, and they'll be on this side, and they're working with the organization on that side, uh, the Border Youth Tennis Exchange Organization on, on, on the Sonora side. So they'll put together these, these backboards, and then ultimately they'll, they'll be along International Street, and they'll be playing tennis, so the idea is to catch some of the shoppers coming back and forth, uh, before the holiday season, uh, and get them excited. Uh, the, the CEO of, of that, that company says that he'd like to get Mayor Bujol and, and Mayor Doyle hitting a couple balls back and forth, if you're available, so that'd be kinda cool to see.
I wanna see that. I wanna see that.
You're gonna be the record.
Aside from that, the ones that you guys are also familiar with, I'd, I'd mention in a few previous, uh, memos, um, was, uh, the Benz Bells Project. Uh, city manager's office is working with Benz Bells to try to establish the mosaic mural project, um, similar to, uh, the one that you guys saw outside of the window at the, at the Pima Association of Governments, uh, building at your last mayor and council retreat. And additionally, we, we recently just got the, um, first, uh, design concept for the Morley Avenue mural, and, uh, we're waiting on the second design concept for the Grand Avenue mural.
The one on, the one on Morley Avenue would be going where?
Uh, on the corner, so, the, it'd be going on the corner of Morley Avenue and East Street. Yeah, and that would be on the...
On the south side or the north side?
On the, uh, south side.
On the south side.
Yeah. So, as you're basically, as you're headed south on Morley Avenue, you'd see it. Yeah, it's got more visibility, um, just kind of a nice, like, entry sort of gateway. And, uh, Dr. Felix and I had met with the, uh, with the artist a couple times. He's, uh, pretty, pretty popular artist. His, uh, his work keeps, you know, going up all over downtown, and he was in Seminole and, and some of the downtown revitalization projects, uh, in Tucson. Um, I, I was, I didn't work directly with him there, but, uh, I worked with our Economic Development Office and, uh, the person that was responsible for getting, you know, some of the muralists involved with the project a couple years back there as well. And so, uh, his murals are highly celebrated, and he does a really high quality of work, so the idea behind, um, returning the services of him for a couple of the, of the flagship sort of murals is to really kick this initiative off and really get people to be inspired, um, and re-inspired, you know, reinvigorate the sense of place, and get people to use their imagination about where these places that they, they just kind of passed through before, maybe they'll stop and look, and it'll give them a reason to, to, to check them out again. Um, the theme that we gave him for the first one was Ambos Nogales, and, uh, I attached the digital sketch to the memorandum, and I think he did a pretty, pretty unique and cool job of coming up with, uh, of a way to consolidate that into, uh, into a story, you know, essentially is what, what we're trying to do, storytelling through public art. And, um, if, if you can see, I provided a brief description based on what was provided to me. And, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of unique. It shows, um, people celebrating, kind of the things that are celebrated on both sides of, of the border, as well as, um, you know, an eagle. Ultimately, how that will be represented is, one of the wings will be the Mexican flag, and one of the wings will be the American flag, which is, I thought, a, a pretty nice way to convey that message. Um, and of course, you know, showing the, the bridge between the Santa Cruz River and, and just the many, the many unique and, and beautiful things that are shared between the US, uh, Nogales, uh, US, uh, Arizona cultural side and the Nogales-Sonora side. The fact that basically it's, it is that Ambos-Nogales, um, community. And below, I included some examples of existing murals that, that, uh, he's already done, so you can kind of see, there's, uh, a more photo, not photorealistic quality to it, but a, less sketchy. Um, and I think, you know, and it, as in any concept, you're gonna kind of see a little bit more of a cartoon quality to it, but I spoke with him about it, and it'll look, it'll look more like the murals below, which is, which is good. Um, and then below that, you can see the Benz Bells examples as well, so, um, that's, that's gonna be a nice project. That'll involve, I think, uh, for those projects, we have to get 50 community members involved to do the installation, so that'll be a lot of fun to, to rally. So that's basically it, as far as the murals go. Um, just trying to make sure I didn't leave anything out. Oh, I'm working with the, uh, the city attorney's office to finalize the public art easement documents right now, and, um, the artist tentative work date is scheduled for the end of November for the, for the painted murals. Um, we're still working on a date for the Benz Bells murals. We're gonna send the design concepts to, we're gonna show, share the design concepts with some community groups, like the Morley Avenue Group. We're gonna share them with the Planning and Zoning Commission, get some feedback, um, and, uh, other members of the community as well, so, so we'll just, we'll get, we'll get some ideas, and, you know, if there are any tweaks, we can, we can tweak it a little bit as we move along. Um, yeah, that's, that's about it so far. Just wanted to give you guys an update on those two items.
Mr. Mayor? Just on the, well, first of all, Mayor Bujol was an all-state tennis player for Nogales High School, so he was trying to throw competition off.
Okay.
I never held a tennis racket. That's okay. I can still hit the ball.
That's, that's what counts. I just, my, this is my personal opinion. On, on the Santa Cruz River there, you have the beautiful county courthouse. I just find it, since, you know, more appropriate to put in the picture of the old city hall there and that. 'Cause that's a very historical building and everything, and it's more related to us, we're the leaders of this project and everything, and I just think that putting the, it's, not this, the historical city hall.
Yeah.
Original city hall.
But it's there.
That's a Mexican.
Right there.
That's a Mexican. I just think, I know the decision is yours, but I just offer you my, my opinion. And, uh, the other thing is, uh, the, this, this Benz Bells, I've always liked this one kindness. I think that comes from Tucson, right?
Uh, it, it, well, they, they have a number of different ones. They have Be Kind, they have Kindness, they, they have a few different ones that say different things, and we can customize it to a certain extent.
No, but, no. But how are you doing with this Walter Home Building? 'Cause I think that's a perfect place to put that, this kind of a wall around here. Has there been any, any progress on that building at all?
So, yeah, I mean, so regarding, regarding moving the demolition forward on that, um, I've been in contact with their attorney, and I've spoken with Dr. Felix at length about, you know, creative ways that we can kind of go about, uh, compelling these folks to, to move forward on this. Currently, we have roughly, uh, about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the abatement of dangerous buildings. We're gonna use, uh, a, a small number of that to abate the dangerous building that caught on fire recently over on Sonora Avenue, so the remainder of that will be what we have left over. What I've been trying to do is, you know, try to compel folks that are, the responsible property owners to, to handle these buildings so that the city doesn't incur the cost. However, the Walter Home Building, you know, in the almost three years that I've been with the city, has been adorned, sort of in my sights, so I can only imagine what it's been like for community members that have had to live with it all this time. Their attorneys currently are reviewing the proposal that we gave them, basically a few different options. Um, but, you know, I've spoken with Dr. Felix, and we've agreed that, at this point in time, if they don't move forward, we, we basically just, in my, in my opinion, my suggestion, my recommendation to mayor and council would be, you know, the total cost for demolition and abatement at this point is 250,000. We're moving forward with a, a commercial appraisal on the building to figure out where it will come in. At this point, we, we have a belief that it would come in at a negative appraisal. Um, you know, the, the site is in the floodplain, so any new construction would need to be elevated out of the floodplain, which costs a lot of money, as well as the 250,000 that would cost at least to, so 52, uh, abate, or roughly, you know, 52 abate the hazmat, and then the other 200 to demolish and dispose of the materials. So we're not, we're not, we're of the mind that that would actually come in at a negative appraisal, so we're gonna move forward and just do the appraisal of the property and see where it comes in, and, and then, you know, see, see what the property owners come back with, with respect to our existing kind of options, and if they, you know, if, if they're, essentially, if they're, uh, just kind of indecisive, you know, we can review our options and hopefully move forward with the abatement of the building, but it would require mayor and council to approve quite a bit of money, and us to potentially condemn the building. A legal process would ensue.
I just think that if there was something happened with that, this, this kind of a sign right there, that would be wonderful. You know, you'd have to pick it up a little bit, I just think it'd be wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I agree, and I'm sorry, that was kind of a long answer to a short question, but it's kind of impossible to talk about that building without getting into all the other details.
Any other questions or comments for the council? Saying none, well, we thank you for giving us this wonderful update. There's a lot of beautiful color in the horizon, uh, from city staff, and thank you for the work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
So, we go back to number one, presentation by Michael Vasquez of two potential Magalhães municipal authorities, financing. Good afternoon.
Councilor, Mr. Mayor, staff. How's everyone doing?
Not as well as you, but...
All right. Well, thank you very much for having me up, up here, uh, this past night, and looking at a couple potential financings, which we'll get into, uh, before we do. Just kind of wanted to talk to you about the market.
The market was great with Obama.
So... As, as you've heard most recently, we've, uh, you know, the market has been experiencing some rate increases. I'm gonna go over here and I'm gonna show you, so the AAA MMV is kind of like the prime rate for municipalities, um, and you'll have it, guys, on page three of your, uh, printout here. And so this is 30 years' worth of rates. And here's your short end of your curve, and here's your long end of your curve, here's where rates were a year ago, the blue line, and here's where they are now. There's approximately a, uh, 200 basis point or 2% increase on the short end, so that's more or less telling us that, you know, all the market forces are driving up rates on the short end, but there's less uncertainty on the back end, which is about a half a percent of 50 basis points. Here is the treasury curve, which runs similarly rates to, uh, not right on top of, it's usually a portion of, uh, so the US Treasury rates are here as well, and they're more or less saying the same thing. Short end of the curve, there, you know, rates are being driven up, and, and, not as drastic, but still something to add. Here is another graph, and this demonstrates again AAA, which is compared to the municipalities' prime, and this is a 20-year history, and there are different rates here. One is the, uh, the 10-year rate, one is the 20-year rate, and one is the 30-year rate. This is on page four of the N. And so, what I'm trying to show here with this graph is that over 20 years, we're still on the lower end of rates, but you can see they've been coming up here in a multitude of ways. Is there any questions, uh, on kind of rates of the market, anything that I've discussed thus far?
Mr. Mayor?
But you don't see the, the rates escalating more? I know that they, what, uh, the interest rate seems to be climbing a little, which the President seemingly objected to, but do you see these rates coming down?
Do I see them coming down? No, I, I do not.
You don't?
Okay. So, the thing is, is that, you know, I, I have to be very careful about saying, you know, where rates go, because nobody knows, and I certainly don't know, but I think that, you know, various portions of the market, I think generally everybody would agree that rates are probably gonna go up. To what extent, nobody knows, but they're probably gonna go up. Next year, I think there's at least a couple, uh, rate hikes expected by the Treasury, so, to some degree. Okay. So, two potential financings that we were looking at. One was, uh, for a refinancing in our business, we call it a refunding, of some of the cities outstanding, that, we'll get to that in just a second. And then the second one was, uh, a financing to pay for tenant improvements for the building next door.
Questions, Mr. Mayor? Uh, Dr. Felix, have we found out what we're gonna do exactly with that building next door? Meaning, what, how much repair it really means?
Well, we, it's still a estimate of about $2 million.
$2 million, for what?
For the first and second floor.
But to do what to it?
That's chase, that's chase money.
But to do what to the building?
To, um, modify the, the requirements right now, and then to, uh, the whole, uh, IT, uh, build-out, and then the furniture and modifications for the walls and all that. That's what we're projecting.
You know, looking at the building, I mean, what was one of the reasons is pretty much look what our, you know, for the water department and this department here, where it already had the teller deals and all that stuff was already there. Um, you know, the air condition's already there, the heating's already there, the bathrooms, I mean, what, what was, what is it that would take $2 million?
Well, the, uh, that's just a guess of it in terms of what we're projecting. There may be some modifications for environmental factors, refrigeration, hasn't been tested for a while, and maybe, just, uh, on the high side, we don't know what we're gonna be anticipating, and so that, we wanna be sure that we have adequate funding to provide the building requirements and, uh, build-out, at least we've done, uh, furniture and all that. You know, there may be, uh, a build-off for any counter, but that's about it. And partitions is what we would look at.
So in other words, the $2 million is basically just a wish, a wish number? That's, that's up there, it really has no, nothing to do with reality to a certain extent?
No, just a guess of it.
But isn't it also technology? Technology could get it up there.
That's important.
So just an idea, just to give, uh, the internet or our internet, you know, hypothetical, here, there's 30,000 dollars, just word, uh, hydraulics, and, and, there's some other costs, so what we're doing is we're, we're probably bringing it to a basis, depending on the outcome here, and bringing to you a budget and, uh, plans, and, and, right now, we're just concentrating upstairs, and we're looking at possibly doing, uh, council chambers. Over there, we're, we're, uh, looking at duplicating, which you all liked, and told us when you were at the retreat at the PAC, we're trying to duplicate something similar to what we saw at the PAC building, the second floor, there's some... So it could be a community use also. So the idea is to build something that you could break down, move and have an empty floor, or build up and even have a council meeting, or have different meetings, uh, different configurations, so, just like, uh, the PAC building, who are trying to duplicate whatever they're doing, we'll be bringing you back some figures in some of the process, we develop and whatnot.
Okay. I'm gonna skip forward one slide out of order here. Okay, so, this is the city's outstanding, I should say, this is the Municipal Development Authority's outstanding debt. So right now, that consists of four series. In 2016, we refunded a portion of your outstanding $2,000 in months, and this is what we made. I'm throwing out ballpark figures here, but we refunded or refinanced approximately 50% of the issues. And so this is what we, why did we not do what all it was? IRS regulations, um, prior to tax reform, you were only allowed to advance refund or advance refinance, uh, tax-exempt bonds just one time. And part of this issue had a refunding already in, so we had to extract out what was advanced refunding bonds and what was new money bonds, and refundance a portion of the new money bonds for savings back in 2016. We couldn't touch this. This is callable June 1, 2019, and we have to wait for IRS regulations approximately three months prior to June 1, 2019, before we refund this. It's generally how it works. Um, so, okay.
Mr. Mayor? You don't have what the interest was, was, we're paying on right now in each one of these? But the percentage of the interest, what, what percentage?
Right here, are your percentage for each issue, or the coupon is your amazing, and there's the interest. And so, right here, here is your, I'm sorry, not, sorry, your percentage. So here are your interest rates on these part amounts, and here's the according interest that occurs for each one of each issue.
So they, so they were changing because of the length of time?
There is no change. All the debt that you issued, well, based there, back in 2005 or 2006, you had a short variable rate issue, that's, so everything here is fixed.
Does this issue, it starts with 4%, then goes up to 4.75%?
That is because, if you recall that graph where I had 30 years' worth of securities, so when you do a bond deal, you generally don't get one rate on everything you issue, you get a rate per matured, and the farther you go out on that curve, the higher the rate usually. So if you do a five-year deal for $5 million versus, uh, you know, a $20 million deal for $5 million, your rates are gonna be much lower on your five-year. Let me go back to this chart real quick. So let's say that you had a deal that went out five years. And so there would be five maturities, the first year, the second year, the fourth one, so. So your rate on the first maturity with, let's say, let's call it one percent. And then on your five-year maturity would be about 1.25%. So that's why you have different coupons. Okay, so.
Michael, I still have a question on that chart, the previous chart. I just wanna make sure I'm clear. Yes, sir. So am I interpreting this correct, that our principal and interest with the different coupons is forty-six million dollars?
So this is your entire outstanding debt for all of these issues. And your total principal and interest paid to be paid in 2039 would be that forty-six million. You would pay that much principal and that much interest.
Okay, principal is thirty-one thousand seven hundred and forty, right?
Yes. And that's of course if nothing changes from this. Thirty-one million.
Thirty-one million.
Okay, so now I wanna, I gotta comprehend what is the total obligation that I have to pay? And I have until 2039 to pay it.
Correct.
And, and considering that debt, the time that we have to pay it, we still have today a double A rating?
You do, on your excise tax credit, you have a double A rating. Which, as I mentioned to you, is something to be proud of. They don't just hand those away and, you know, I'm from a border town, so, you know, I don't mean it. I mean, for a border town, there's usually kind of a little shadow that goes along with that. So, I mean, that's an excellent, excellent rating.
And you told me when I asked you on Douglas and you said Douglas was A minus?
I wanna say they're an A, no more than an A, but probably an A minus.
Alright, so we understand pretty good here. I, that's what I wanna comprehend. As we're going on this, I wanna make sure what are there is, and what is the gap that we, we have, Mr. Delgado? What is that gap now that I wanna know about? How much can we exceed that forty-six million? And where does that come into play?
That is a complicated question.
Alright, do the best you can.
So this is a total debt. And annually, what are we paying on that?
So as an example, for fiscal year ended 2019, the year in which we're in, you will pay 2.141 million dollars. And so actually, let's talk about that real quickly. So, one of the reasons that you have a double A rating is, well, there's a couple of reasons. One is because your debt service coverage is, I think, a minimum of seven times. So your revenues exceed your debt service over seven times. That's very healthy. Usually it's in the two to three times range, but that's how you end up with a single A rating. So, that's, that's one of the things. And then the other is, is you ask the question, well, how much can we issue? Technically, you can issue up to two-point-five times coverage. But your rating's sort of, you could finance it.
But I don't wanna risk our rating.
You don't.
But, we don't.
You don't. And, and one of the things, I'm kinda going out of order here. One of the things that I was gonna suggest to council is, so, you know, going forward and with the uncertainty of kind of, you know, what's coming in in the future, excise taxes, so on and so forth. You have a lot of desires, you know, for perhaps parks or whatever, you know, public infrastructure. My advice would be to consider perhaps other avenues of financing. And I'm not saying let's create geo-debt and excise debt and max you out. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying perhaps rather than financing a park with your excise tax debt, you could finance it with maybe some geo-debt. And then that way, you diversify your revenues and expenditures and it's not all in your excise tax debt. It's just something to consider.
Oh, I think that's a good recommendation, sir. You know, the burden on our excise tax right now is heavy for what? We have some obligations there with that tax that we wanna build up. Like, we're still looking for more public safety people. We're looking to buy another, one or two more big fire trucks that cost close to three-quarters of a million dollars a piece. So, you know, we can't put too much of a burden on our excise tax. Plus, we're looking at our, our pay study for the employees that's gonna cost. Which comes out of that excise tax though, too. So, I don't wanna put a heavy burden on just the excise tax. I would like to keep it of what you say, Michael, that our revenues exceed our debt seven times above. I think that's a healthy marker for us. But then again, like other cities, you know, we do have to provide services. And we wanna make sure we give our community good services, but we've gotta balance ourselves through the knowledge and experience of the seven people here as a team working together, what we feel comfortable with. Do we buy a Taurus or do we go ahead and buy an Escalade?
And then I just, I maybe look at it from a different perspective. So, again, I'm not saying to the city of Nogales, hey, let's go max out all your different credit cards or your options. But maybe rather than paying, you know, five million from your excise taxes for a park, you go through your geo. And at the end of the day, the Nogales citizen is still paying for the same debt service, right? It's still the five million on the park, it's just paid from a different source.
Just for clarification, so we all understand, try not to stay away from your academics. What does geo?
General obligation bonds. Those are paid by property taxes. But we don't have property taxes. You don't? You don't, you don't have primary or secondary.
So it's gotta come out of the same sales tax or whatever we're looking for? Now, this does not include anything that are the, like the water, shoe, and garbage?
That is a separate one.
That's a separate deal. None of these bonds are dependent on, on the water?
No, they're not.
No, they're not. Everything is, everything is basically dependent?
Let me back up, excuse me. So you have financed multiple different, you know, parts of government, water is one of those through these bonds. But the security is not paid from your water system. It's paid through your excise taxes.
Now, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. May I address the city manager?
Yes, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Phillips, what about, considering this, what about the, those new water lines that we were talking about? You mentioned to the council that we're two or three years behind that, that's about fifteen million dollars that we're supposed to have already started. Where are you gonna get the money for that? Or are you including, is this part of this presentation to add fifteen million dollars for that?
Well, we have talked about, perhaps, you know, the priority is to not leave that chase bank building empty.
Right, no, we don't wanna leave that empty.
That's right.
The second one, obviously, is how do we finance the infrastructure? And so we're gonna pursue dealing with refunds. They have some plan design grants that we're gonna apply for. And then come to a real determination as to whether it's twelve million dollars, fifteen million dollars, ten million dollars. And then address it as, we have shovel-ready projects and actual costs. And then we can come back to the council and say, in order to fix these problems, we need to bring two or three alternatives to the table and see how the council wants to direct us to proceed.
So the purpose of this study session with Mr. Delgado is to tell us how much money we can? And then tell you what to fit into that?
The capability of giving a position right now with our debt, current debt, and possible future debts.
My deal is that, we've always talked about the water rates and everything. The people that need it the most that have hard time painting are the ones that need their outdated pipes replaced. And then the other thing is, I, I for one, don't wanna see that chase bank sit empty though either. Alright, now I'm getting an understanding. Okay, Mr. Delgado? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I was just gonna have a question, 'cause you touched base right now on some of the things that affect the bond rating. And are there any other, other factors that can affect the bond rating? By say, decision that the council makes that might affect the bond rating somehow? Whether through our behavior, whether we're reckless, whether we're, you know, in other words. Could, I don't know if that falls under your domain, or the city manager could find out, but give us a list of things that, so that, so we will be a little more prudent in the future and exercise good judgment on the decisions that we make. Are there some other factors besides that?
Yes, sir. First of all, that's an excellent question. And the answer is yes, and yes, and yes, and yes, and yes. So. I think just about everything in the world has more liability about it, you know, in it today. I mean, everybody's trying to be more careful about opinions or things that they do. And the rating agencies are certainly one of them. In the market crash in, you know, approximately '08, they had provided ratings on a lot of different things. And, you know, they kinda got their, you know, head handed back to them as a result of that. So, you know, over the years, they've kind of increased their protocols and the way, you know, the way they go about rating things. And one of them most certainly is management. So, you know, when we've done transactions for the city of Nogales, after they kinda ask us about the credit, then they also kinda ask questions about management as well. Let me give you another example, so pension obligations. And, you know, they find out that you are, you know, really, really underfunded. And even though it's not part of the credit, they do see that as part of the city's health and also liability. So, I mean, there are a lot of different components that can indirectly affect your performance.
So would that be your responsibility, doctor, to kind of give us updates and kind of a reminder how we can, you know, make sure that we don't, we don't create a problem?
I think it's important in terms of due diligence and not over-encompass the city and be foolproof. And take on only debt that we can honestly deal with. I think that's a big factor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vasquez, I owe you an apology. I mispronounced your last name. Please accept my apologies.
Not at all. Council member, first of all, I'm an investment banker, so I've been called much worse.
I'm trying to.
So in looking at the two financings, there were some thoughts. First and foremost, let's, let's take a look at the easy one, which was supposed to be easy, and that was your refinancing, right? So we're refinancing, not to pay all the professionals, but refinancing to achieve savings for the city. Rates are going up. And over even in the past couple of weeks, we've lost savings. At some point, if savings keep going up, it doesn't make sense economically to refinance these bonds. So what does that mean? It means a lot. Let's first talk about, you know, professionals like myself. The vast majority of the team that works on your financing is paid on the combo. So if we start working on your refinancing and it doesn't work, you don't have to pay. There is, there is one cost of issuance that whether you do the deal or not, you have to pay, and that's your rating. Okay? So, your rating fee. So when Standard and Poor's who rates your bonds comes down here to, or they don't come down here anymore. When we do our rating presentation, they get into the details, ask us all the questions. They're gonna send us the fee whether we do the deal.
That's a double A rating?
Yes.
And the fee usually is, is what, one percent, half a percent?
Not, doesn't quite work that way, although it does range with the size. So on a, you know, let's say a ten-million-dollar deal, that's a fifteen-thousand-dollar fee approximately.
So if it's a fifty-million-dollar refinancing?
If it's fifty, then maybe we're in the mid-twenties, maybe thirty. I would have to, I would have to get a, I'm just ballparking. Okay. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. It's my hope that rates will at least hold or maybe improve. I don't know how realistic that is, but we're moving as fast as we can to, to try and get into a position where, you know, we could fully figure it for them. So this is the refinancing, or the refunding component right here on page, actually you don't have it.
No, basically, it would have been ten.
This is the one right here.
You follow the yellow, would have been ten.
Okay, so if you look on the prior page, you'll see the 2009 issue.
He was very good.
This one right here, 2009. This is the one where we're refinancing, potentially got to refinance. So right here, we net this up, so we take this off of your existing debt. And then we would issue new money bonds. And here is your savings, your debt service savings. Approximately two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. And rather than, and this is typically the most common approach, to evenly apply that savings from the top to the bottom. But I wanted to kind of carve out a little area from your existing debt so that we can make some space for this new one. So here, here is your maximum manual debt service. It's not entirely even, it goes anywhere from 2.16 million dollars to 2.255. And so I wanted to carve out a little space in there, so when we add it on the new debt, you didn't just get a huge new debt service. It goes on top and then you spike your maximum annual debt service, which is part of your coverage ratio, which affects your.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. To make sure I understand, 'cause you have to take, walk me a piece, you know, okay? When we're refinancing this, are we adding additional debt to this refinancing? Because I noticed that on the original, we had a debt service of forty-six, and on this refinance, we have a debt service of forty-eight.
Okay, well, that's because we are adding that to that. That's the new money piece right here. This is your bank building piece right here.
So we're adding? So two million dollars, we're adding two million? But, but Mike, Mr. Mayor, the question here is, our savings is two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, but to get that savings will probably be two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars or if not more. Between, between the different fees and the actual, when we get to selling the bonds, how much, how much would that all add up?
That is your net savings, so all the, all the fees and every.
So this is already deducting all fees? It would still, we would end up saving two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars? That's adding two million dollars to the, to the debt?
So there's, there's two components here. And they're separate. There is your refinancing, which may or may not occur, depending on rates. And then there is your new money. So whether the refinancing occurs or not, I'm generally getting the feeling that, you know, council is leading pretty strongly to funding, making, providing funding for this building. So no matter what, you're gonna add approximately two million dollars to it.
So that's why it goes to forty-eight million five hundred and seventy?
Okay, now I understand. Please, don't be disappointed, we're just.
This is my job.
But then again, what would our monthly payments? I mean, you know, here it shows a savings of, you know, eighteen thousand dollars of, you know, in a year's time or whatever. But if we add the new stuff, if they knew the two million dollars, two million one hundred and five thousand, we would, we would actually be adding, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars a year to our debt service. And two-hundred thousand dollars a year service, we're basically looking at that painted over a ten, is that a ten-year period?
Twelve.
Twelve years, okay. Twelve years and we would end up, we would end up paying, yeah, roughly two-hundred thousand dollars more, more a year for the, for the, for the two million dollars.
Right, so the refinancing is, is just kind of an added benefit. And even if our rates were, let's say, one percent or two percent lower, and I'm not a rate man, I've just given you ballpark figures here. Let's say savings goes up to four-hundred thousand or five-hundred dollars. There is nothing that we can do, no matter how rates, no matter how low rates go, that we're gonna carve out enough space for that two million dollars. enough space for that $2 million. I, I was just trying to do as much as I could, given whatever savings we had.
Of course, this is, Mr. Mayor, this is all assuming that that's what it would cost us to fix that building, and unless we say, well, whatever's left over, we would use somewhere else. Or is, if we, if we do the bond issue for that building, that it would have to be used on that building?
We would have to be careful about the way that we described it in the legal documents and in the resolution, so that, you know, in the event, let's say, you only needed 1.5 and opposed to 2 million, you could use 500,000 for other city buildings. So, we could say, it just depends how you, how you want it.
Yeah, it couldn't, it couldn't be used for roads or anything like that.
Then probably we'd have to buy that.
Excuse me, Mr. Vasquez. Mr. Vasquez, getting back to, may I, Mr. Consul, you just said right now that we could use it for roads as long as we wrote it in?
No.
Well, I, I was, I'm giving a general answer, just to, to get where we need to go. Again, roads is a whole separate issue, because, I mean, like, when you finance things, you're responsible for making sure that your debt amortizes with the life of whatever it is that you're doing. So, like, we couldn't, and I'm just exaggerating, we couldn't do 30-year debt on a computer. We'd have to, let's say that IRS says the life of a computer is two years, that's how long we have to finance it. Roads are tricky. It's possible, it just, you know, we have to think about it a little bit.
But it's possible.
Potentially, I mean, that is more of a legal question than it is a, you know, a financial question.
Well, we, we can do it, all right. But, well, then that, that means we need a tighter figure, Mr. Mayor, to make sure what we're gonna borrow, because I just wanna borrow what we need, not borrow extra and then go see what, but even though, I know we're gonna need some money for, right here for the police department, oh two, and all of that, for them, because they're gonna be moving up, so I know I'll need some money for that.
Okay, may I add to that, though, I mean, so, it is important to get the figure fairly accurate, because if you need to go buy, borrow an additional $250,000, you have to pay all this, and that's expensive.
Right, right.
And so, a bond deal, especially a municipal bond deal that's tax exempt, which makes it more beneficial to certain investors, it gets you a lower rate, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it, and so everybody has their minimums that they recharge because of $250,000 bond deals, and it's not gonna take many less work than a typical dollar bond, and it's the same for all the returns. So, it's generally a good idea to, to know what it is that we're gonna finance, so you don't have to come back again.
Or that we've got money, we have to come out from somewhere else from the city without looking at a bond issue.
This guy's better.
Or, or the money could be borrowed for a shorter period of time, not using a bond issue, right? I don't know what the.
How do you do that?
Well, the bank current rates the banks would charge, it's, you know, it's in the comparable deal of 4% or 5%.
Well, so, let me address that. So, in, when I first kind of started looking at this project, I'm gonna give as much information as I can, not make it too much. A few years ago, certain investors came into the municipal market that were not there before. Usually, you know, you'd have to go through a full public offering, where, you know, you'd go buy your bonds from a desk somewhere, and you'd be an investor level. Over the past few years, there was developed more or less what you call a private placement, and there were a lot of different investors who were looking at municipal bonds as a way of making money when, you know, nothing else was making money. So, they came in, and they kind of formed these, you know, banks, or JP Morgan would create a municipal, you know, side bank, whatever, that would do municipal debt, and they would be offering rates that were competitive, maybe sometimes even more competitive than, you know, a regular bond. And in those, those private placement deals, half of the cost were there for professionals, because you didn't need a non-provider, you didn't need an official state, and just various things, right? So, I'm just throwing out ballparks, but let's say it was 50% less cost. That is, that would have been an option prior to tax reform, and I did look at it, and the short of it is, that when you add in all the costs, still, like, bond deals are better, more economical for the city, but I'm gonna talk about it a little bit. So, with tax reform, with the increase, increase of corporate tax rate, that affected their ability to be competitive, and.
Decrease.
Decreased their ability, sorry, thank you, decreased their ability to be competitive.
You thought we were still with Obama.
And so, and so I, I took a look at the private placement rates, added the smaller cost of issuance, and I took the public offering rates, which was smaller than this, or lower than this, but there was more cost of issuance, backed it all down through the calculations one would do, and the public offering is more economical for the city. So, yes, I did.
Another question here from Councilman number nine. On, you know, we're talking ballparks and stuff like that, on the bond, so your request would probably be to figure, our figure be on the high rate of, instead of, you know, on the low rate to save some money?
I'm not sure I understood the question, Councilmember.
You said, you know, ballpark figures and all of that, you know, if we don't come out with the amount, and we need to get money elsewhere, it'll be more expensive than if we have leftover money on the bond?
Yes.
So, basically, our, our assumption of amount is higher on, on a bond, it'll be cheaper than having to get money elsewhere if we, where we don't have the, the amount?
Yes, yes, sir, that's accurate. However, there are limits to how much we can issue, and not to get overly complicated, but it's an important matter. So, because we're issuing tax exempt debt, IRS sets those rules, regulations, and one of the things their biggest concern is, is they don't want municipalities issuing all this money on the public's dollars.
But a conservative figure.
So, we would have to stay within a certain range, just, just to keep you safe and within your tax exempt coverage.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman, dear?
Yeah, Mayor Fleming, quick question, how do you secure your debt? Like, say you, the city of Nogales owes you all this money, how do you secure this debt?
Okay, so, let's, let's, let's go back to coverage, that's an excellent question. So, right now, we were talking about seven times coverage.
That's right.
That's a gross pledge. So, the, the city doesn't have all this money, get to pay all of its debts, and then if it has enough money, it can pay off its bonds, it doesn't work that way. The bonds get paid first, and then you have whatever's left over to take care of, whatever you have. So, that's how it's secured. It's secured by your excise taxes that are, that are coming in, and, and so, they, they get the first nap. So, when, when your, when your money's come in, they go to the trustee, they, they pay the bond holders first.
So, so if you're using your excise tax to pay your employees, and they come and take all of the excise tax, the employees don't get paid, right?
Right, but that's, that's where we hire a city manager and a chief financial officer to make sure that those things are done appropriately, because if that's the problem, then these good people, we need to find somebody else.
And, and just, just to be clear, I mean, it's, it's not just the city of Nogales that has a gross pledge, that's pretty common nationally, but also in Arizona, because Arizona uses excise taxes more than some other states for financing, so that's pretty common.
Tucson, Tucson and all their bond issues, they're, they're using their property taxes.
They have multiple credits.
Yeah.
So, they, their water system operates off of water revenues, their GOs, property taxes, they have COPs, certificates of participation, which is an annual appropriation, annual appropriation of the general fund. So, yeah, they, they have a couple of different sources.
But that's because they're a much bigger city, same thing with Phoenix, and Phoenix can do pretty much, because it's such, you know, when you have three, you have many people.
No, they can, Councilmember, you can do that. Yes, sir, I agree.
But just because they're bigger doesn't mean they're smarter, because you can look at the city of Detroit for an example of that.
I remember that.
No, that was the Republican mayor.
Any other comments or questions?
So, in summary, are you gonna come back with, to us? I, I see Mr. Vasquez, Vasquez. I understand his presentation, but, so now, are you going to come back and tell us what, how much you actually need to do that and to remodel over here, though, too, with a figure?
Mr. Mayor, it comes from Verona, that's exactly the plan, to get some actual costs, and the description of the bond would include both buildings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Also, Dr. Felix, you know, we've talked about what savings that building could bring us, right? So, I think that has to be put into the equation. I mean, if we're gonna be saving, you know, $10,000 or $20,000 a, a month by, by having the building there, you know, and, and, you know, that's basically what our, what our payments are gonna be, extra, you know, the building could self-finance itself and pay for, for the, for the deal there, right? So, you have to make sure we take a look at exactly, exactly what we really need, and what, you know, could we just live off, off borrowing the money for two years or three years instead of borrowing the money for 12 years?
Could we do that, Mr. Vasquez? If we wanna borrow just for eight years, can we do that?
That's a, that's another very good question. Okay, so, municipal bonds, nine times out of 10, when you, when you issue bonds, there's a 10-year par call. So, if you go do a mortgage on your house, generally speaking, in five days, rates, you know, it's so much lower, and it made economic sense, you could go, you can ask for that penalty. It doesn't work that way with bonds. You have generally a thin par call, and when you get closer to that, you will go out and ask before tax reform, you could have advanced refunded them. Now, if you issue 10-year debt, you're stuck with a 10-year. So, when I was looking at the new money issue for this building over here, I could have stretched that debt for as long as you're other than it, it just made it a lot easier. But the concern was, is okay, what happens if the future debt that you might issue, too, the city's done an excellent job with maintaining a general fund, consistent general fund. So, I know that there, you know, our potential challenges are worried about, worries about excise taxes, you know, with the evaluation of the peso and, you know, bonds, I understand. So, the thought was, is well, what happens if in two to three years, the city's cash flush, and it wants to pay off this building over here, but we just did a 10-year, you know, bond deal, and you guys are stuck? So, I took a look at an early call at three years, and it's doable, and, you know, the, the thing is, is that you have to pay a little bit more. So, there's a rate premium. And what that is right now, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but let's say that if you just did a 10-year call, your rate was 3%, and if you did a three-year call, let's say your rate would be 3.2%, so you're paying an extra 20 basis points for that ability, that flexibility to manage your debt. You don't have to do that.
But, but on a, on a three-year, on a three-year deal, the, the actual interest would be less, right? I mean, usually, the longer you go, the higher the interest.
Well, so, what are we talking, are we talking about amortizing in three years?
No, the actual interest rate, I mean, if you, if you're gonna finance something for 10 years, let's say you're looking at 4%, but if you're gonna finance it three years, the risk is less, because you seem to be able to look to three years in the future.
But I'm talking about a three-year call, not three-year amortization.
So, you're gonna be paying it over a 12-year period or 10-year period, and then, and then there'll be a balloon, basically?
No balloon, no balloon. So, this is the amount you're financing, right? If I shorten it, then your annual debt service goes up, let's call it, you know, 300, 400, 500,000, just depending how much I shorten. So, the concern was, is that if I shorten it up too much, and this goes, so let's call it 3 million instead of 2.3 million, that affects your coverage, and then that's something that the rating agencies would be interested in. So, I would definitely not advise the city to pursue a full. This, this is just your, your debt out, and amortized over 12 years, and in the third year, you have the ability to call the rest of this.
Well, your recommendation would be to amortize over 12 years?
I, I took a look at it at 10, and it just, it just makes this ease right here to get bigger. So, we can play with it, it was just, it was a place to start.
Well, I mean, it, it's good that we have some, some breathing room for a debt service annually, though, too. So, I like the 12 years, though, because it keeps the debt service more practical for us.
Sorry, again, I wish I could do the math in my head, but I mean, I could technically stretch it all the way out to 2039, and then this annual debt service becomes theirs.
Yeah, I don't.
But I don't know.
Not for two years.
Well, look, again, it all tends to depend on how much savings there is by having that building also, right? Because, I mean, the savings basically will dictate how much we really need to borrow, right?
When, what are we talking about, savings?
Well, we've discussed, we've discussed different savings that we could have by purchasing that building. So, instead of, instead of the city spending, let's say, 20,000 a month for whatever, they would not be spending those 20,000 a month for whatever it is, right? So, so it could be that, instead of amortizing over that, with $20,000 a month savings, and paying $20,000 a month, they would be eliminated much, much faster, or wouldn't, wouldn't be needed, you know, it's obviously have to be something that Dr. Felix would have to take a look at.
Oh, I see. This, this yellow here means, there's a change in the debt service, but this is plus, this isn't a savings.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yeah.
I thought that's what he was referring to.
It's, it's actually savings.
This is on the actual.
So, I know it, it should be, well, it doesn't, it can be either. Anyways, the way it works out here is, this is actually savings, I didn't want to show it as a negative, because that freaks everybody out.
Oh, all right, now I understand.
Yeah, but we're talking, I'm, I'm, I'm overlooking it, this, the, here instead of this, or you.
But I'm still looking at this as savings for us, though, why are we doing this?
Yes, but it's, it's not, it's not the reason you're, you're pulling the trigger on that, right?
Right.
This is just an added benefit, potential. And then, so again, this was just a place to start, this 12-year amortization, you know, we could do many different things with it, and I think mostly, I would be looking for guidance, like, Michael, there is no way we're gonna pay this thing off, or, so in that case, why pay, why pay extra, you know, at the rate to be able to do something? But if there's a good feeling that in two to three years, this is life, then it's probably worth the flexibility.
Okay. Well, come back with us, tell us the exact cost of everything that you, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Again, it's always a pleasure to be up here, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Where are you, are you located in Phoenix?
My office is in Phoenix, but I live in Tucson.
Great support.
So, you're actually the catch-up, yeah? Okay, so, we have one more discussion item, and that's number four, discussion on recreational facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up, so we can give some clarification to the city manager on, we've been talking during our last budget session on looking at our recreational facilities, our city property, adding some new Little League fields and soccer fields for the community on the regional part. But I would just like to suggest, so that Dr. Felix can get started and come back with a presentation, is to look at a schematic for us to see how, looking at Little League parks, Little League fields, a little regional park, and some soccer fields, come back with a schematic of potential costs for that project, of building it on city property, where you're gonna build it, and also, for the funding for this, Mayor, since we were talking about funding, and Mr. Vasquez was talking about GO, I'm suggesting that this be, I don't know what the total cost is going to be, but I do understand what our, our, our budget is, okay, to handle extra debt right now. And I would just suggest that we, we do something that's nice, that's feasible, but we leave it up to the community to decide, that we'd, Dr. Felix, come back with an avenue of financing this park and fields, and asking the community for a special recreational district over, let's say, let's say it's gonna cost us X and over Y period of time, it'll take us 10 years to pay off X amount of dollars, and that we ask. And that we ask them to go ahead, if they want to support this, that for a period of 10 years, that we consider having, uh, the payoff through a property tax. But at the end of the 10 years, when it's paid off, the property tax sunsets. There's no more such property tax. So we can build up something that doesn't impact our particular budget, but at least to show the public, this is what we want to do, this is what we're suggesting to you. We can get people on board, they might be willing to come up and say, well, let's go ahead and help out and, and help them with this issuance of these GO bonds or whatever, so we can pay for these, these fields. At least to give it a, a presentation, and if we agree on it, on the financing and everything, then we send it to the public. I really don't want to do this on an, on an excise, because we might have some other needs later on. I think this is something that the community, we were talking about recreation, then for the kids, uh, to get it done, that we ask them to help us. But I think it's, it would be who was to go ahead and at least have a presentation, have a schematic for the public to see, and then let's talk about how we're going to finance it. That's all I wanted to say, Mayor, and if everybody was in a court, so Dr. Felix can get on it and make a presentation to us for next year or so.
And give us a ballpark figure.
Right. And how we're going to finance it, like this. And let the people decide. That way, they'll know that, hey, we made our effort, but, you know, we're, we're limited what we can do, though, too. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Uh, were there any other questions or comments?
So is there, no, I just, we're not going to, but do we have some consensus that Dr. Felix should do that and come back to us?
I'm in agreement.
Anybody else?
You can look at anything, it's, you know, right there. Councilman Viall?
I think, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Verona, and I've had conversations already with Dr. Felix on, you know, softball fields, uh, and, uh, recreation activity, uh, you know, volley, sand volleyball and, uh, stuff that we've been looking at, soccer fields, uh, you know, uh, I think Dr. Felix could elaborate a little bit on where we're at and, you know, even get, try to get, uh, some grants on to build these, uh, facilities and through the Diamondbacks, through the Honeymoon and other sources.
Fianberg? Carlos Diaz, anything like that?
I think we should also reach out to Home Depot as far as grants, because at the BFW, we are applying for a, for a grant for, uh, it looks very positive for building supplies to repair the roof there. So they're, they're, they'll partner with us and, and form up their materials and gift cards and stuff to, to help us out. So, yeah, we should reach out to all these big corporations.
I think in a certain way, they did that, they gave us the paint, I think, for the library. They donated the paint.
Mayor, Council, we're also going to do, present an IBA to the council for approval for, uh, recreation, uh, IBA, the city taking over some of the county park. And I would encourage them to help us expand the, the opportunity for sports activities as well. Be a county-city initiative.
We could also make this additional parks and all of that. A regional deal, and it could be in Galasanda Cruz County, which would help in the cost, though, too.
As long as the county's willing to.
Right, they would have to agree to it.
They'd agree with carrying it.
So we, we've already had discussions with the county, and so they're, they're in agreement. So we just need to plot it out in terms of what, where and how much and, and who's the cloud sharing.
Because, because, Mayor, we look right now, we, we have a lot of, of kids from Rio Rico that are playing in, in, you know, the fields here in Galas, quite a lot of them, in fact. And, of course, the county's very happy just sending them over. It's not a bad idea, but I mean, you know, it also affects us, because then we need more fields to cover the whole thing.
Well, that's part of your presentation, to come up to us with options, what's it going to look like, have Mr. Butcher here, you know, make a nice presentation for us for that, so we can make a decision on what we want to do.
Mayor, Councilman Verona, there are two parks that will be, that our heads will be taking over responsibility for, and both of them, one's in Rio Rico and, uh, one's by Tuvan. And then they're talking about what other parks can they be, can we take on in terms of managing and planning for. So the IBA will be presented in whatever we need.
But, but in this IBA, I mean, the county would carry the full burden of anything we do outside the city.
The costs, yeah.
Right.
But we, the, the, Marcel's department would manage the whole lot pretty sure.
Yeah, but I mean, at their cost, the whole thing would be at their cost. And if the city was chipping in money or, or for free, I mean, you know, you can't do it.
No, different than the animal control. We pay for our own, we pay our fair share for our company.
They're going to pay their fair share for them?
That's true.
So, so you can give us a presentation?
Okay. Uh, seeing no further business, uh, on this study session meeting, I go, I'll go ahead and call this meeting adjourned. We have about a 10-minute break before we go to the next meeting.